Okay. Good evening. What's that? All right. We'll go ahead and open the session for senioral business, 6:00 PM. 1.1, call order. The special board meeting of the Ring of the World Games by exclusive features, call order, on October 22, 2020, at 6:02 PM. 1.2, roll call. Trustees to identify themselves by first and last name to formally establish the forum. We have four members here with us in the library, and we have one, four member, Dr. Leslie Branson calling in via Zoom. I'll start with Gordon Zerati, trustee area three, Dr. Spencer Taylor-Gerle, trustee area eight.
Cindy Gardner, trustee area two. Dana Midland, trustee area one. Natalie Lindman, trustee area two.
Leslie Branson, trustee area one.
We have our forum. 1.3, pledge of allegiance. Let's have this led by both of our applicants. Bill, on the air, it's restricted.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. 2.0, adoption of the agenda. 2.1, adoption of the agenda. Quick motion.
So much.
And is that first?
A second.
And is our second any discussion? If not, we're going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And Dr. Branson, I didn't quite hear how you voted.
I voted yea.
Okay.
Also, excuse me, please. I'm not able to see the dais. I'm only able to see myself. Can I be fixed?
She'll be able to see him when we move the camera to there.
So you can't, you can't see anything?
I can see myself.
So on your screen, on your, are you on your phone?
Yes, sir.
And you have the Zoom window open on your phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there like a, you can swipe to another, another video or anything on your phone?
Leslie, up in the top, there should be a section that shows pictures, and if you click on that, you should be able to see the picture of the dais.
I see the back of Mark's comput, no, Cindy's, somebody's paperwork.
That's yours.
Mine?
You flipped your camera. You need to.
Oh, okay. So I'll flip it back.
Proceed in the Zoom link, not on your camera phone.
I'm, says I'm on the meeting.
You are on the meeting.
And it says live.
Well, she may not be able to see it then because it's not on our end.
Turn your phone horizontal, not vertical.
Okay. It's horizontal.
So you only see yourself?
Correct.
Is there a gallery view or a button on there that says view or gallery view?
There's live, you on YouTube.
No, we don't want, you don't want to view it on YouTube.
No. I have it on live.
You can hear us, okay, right, Leslie?
I can hear you fine.
I think we'll have to keep moving forward. Just do this via audio then.
All right.
Okay. We'll walk you through. All right. So 2.1, the adoption of the agenda that asked unanimously. With 3.0, we'll move on to our provisional appointment. 3.1, board of trustees, introduce candidates. So after the interviews have been completed, a board discussion will take place. Just to educate everyone on how we'll do this process, we'll be interviewing in alphabetical order, which means we'll be interviewing Mr. Bill Melinger first, and we will ask the other applicant, who's Ratsick, to step out while we interview Bill. This hopefully will create a little less pressure on each of the candidates, so they don't feel as much that, you know, pressure while they're in the room answering our questions. And once we finish with Mr. Melinger's interview, we'll go ahead and swap places, if that's okay. And then at that point, we'll bring both applicants in, and we'll have our discussion. So if we'd like to begin, I will also, just for our board members here, you're going to go ahead and round robin our questions. So we'll just go straight down the line, and then over to Leslie, and then back around until we get through all our questions that we have. These questions are based off of some historical precedent and as well provided by the Health and School Boards Association.
And then reviewed by our attorneys. Very first, only ever did this.
Thank you for that, thank you.
So I understand you then, you want to stick right to this question? Yeah, no follow-up, no, I think you're on.
Okay. So with that, we will ask Mr. Melinger, you may take the podium here, and Ms. Ratsick, who would mind stepping off for a moment?
Thanks, Heather.
Good evening.
For speaking, it usually sounds better over YouTube with it off, so I'm comfortable with that if you're comfortable.
It's, yes, it's difficult on the top, but then I'll move.
Well, thank you for coming and interviewing us, with us this evening. I know that area one is a, it's one, a new area, like we're excited to get some representation from Cedar Falls, part of the area. We'll go ahead and start with some of these questions as heads up, I'll have to ask in our application. We're going to go and ask those again, again for the public's sake. So if you wouldn't mind, we'll start with question one. What do you see as the basic purpose of the public schools? What is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Well, I'm an old time thinker, and that is reading, writing, and arithmetic. Education is the main purpose, and equipping students to be what I believe is the need to be a lifelong learner, and to do the kinds of things that will help equip them to whatever that educational track might take them. And I think that we have a gem up here that really needs to be promoted where we actually, and the trustees are a part of this promotion, to be able to communicate to other people and all, the resources we have for education. I think that we've tried to maintain some of those special programs that provide an education that's more than just the college-bound student. Well, I think that is incredible and necessary. I think you have to provide other kinds of educational experiences as well. And it would seem to me that the role and responsibility of the Board of Trustees is to help that education happen, provide the resources, work through the, one of the reasons that I would probably not be excited about being on the board is because of all the challenges financially that have been for this district, and it's even across the state, but especially for this district with the declining enrollment over the last 13, 15 years or more, that, but that as the trustees, that's your responsibility. Balance those scales, figure out how to still have a creative, quality education while also trying to meet the financial needs of both your staff, your certified staff, your classified staff, and, and the community. And that's even a bigger responsibility here on this mountain, because our community is a part of the educational system, participates in it in many ways, wants to be available to assist in the education here. We see that whether you're looking at Mountains High School, and the people that come in there have been a good one, or the things that happened at the local elementary schools. So as trustees, I think that's the responsibility of trustees, to help that educational experience develop.
Thank you. And forgive me, but, Dr., we wanted to introduce all of the folks here. I know you probably know most of us, but our trustees have introduced ourselves, but we also have Connie Santa Cruz, we have Jenny Habberlin, Todd Field, Michelle Murphy, Diego, I should introduce their titles too. So, Kenny, so any of those. Very hard, I've got all their titles there. We also have in the room as well Heather Vias, Director of Education Services, Mark Solomon, IT, support, and we also have our Director of Special Education Services, Eric Klein.
Excellent.
Okay. With that, we're going to question two. Sorry about that.
Okay. So I have this question. What are you proud of in this district? There's three parts, apparently, so hold on. What would you like to accomplish as a board member? Which is your highest priority and why? So what are you proud of in this district?
So, at the risk of bringing up something that might not still be here, because I don't know all the programs that are still in place, but some of the things that I've been proud of over the years in this district is kind of creative educational experience that we have. So you look at it, and no offense to any school over another school, but I've had my most experience out at Valley of Enchantment Elementary School, and the kind of creative learning experiences are there, from the butterflies to the chicken coop to the gardens and things like that. I think we have an incredible staff that is gifted. I'm, I should tell you, I'm the husband of an educator. She has a lifetime California credential, and so I believe that teachers are someone that sometimes give it a raw deal and a little bit of a negative view, and I think that I look at this district and I'm proud of the teachers, I'm proud of the staff that we have up here. I like them, and I'm proud of some of the programs we have, like Abbott. I'm actually proud of things like Mountain High Schools, that we give an opportunity for students to have a different kind of educational experience, who maybe are not handling the regular educational experience, regular classroom experience, but we give them a way to succeed. And I've really been proud of things like some of the sports programs that we have, and actually things like shop and stuff like that. I'm not sure what else is still in place, our music and the theater arts and things like that. We've been here many times with Rotary for, for, for community events, for music competitions, and we just have some tremendous students up here.
And then what would you like to accomplish as a board member?
To listen well and to do whatever's necessary to help this, this, this district succeed. But I touched on something in my first question, and also to promote this district. Again, I think we have creative educational things going on. California used to be a leader nationally in the educational system, and it appears that that is no longer the place, and yet I think that is true here on this mountain. What we provide students in this environment is just special, and, and so I would want to continue to promote and develop that.
And so which is your highest priority and why? I get apparently looking.
It just, help, help this system, help us to continue to support the staff that we have, develop other staff, and I think bringing in people that start seeking it, this, this would be a great place to bring your students. It'd be a reason to move to this mountain because of the education system, and that's what I want to continue to develop. Is there a title?
No, you're, you're fine. So please don't feel rushed.
Okay.
No, too. Okay. My turn. And I only have two questions here. Well, my mask is blacking up, I can't see, I'm going to do my mask off, so I can hear clearly. As a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or primary role, and how would you fulfill that role, both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
That's a good question, Juviana, and, and I think I'm still trying to learn, and I've always had a bit of a high regard for school boards, almost to the sense of awe and maybe even fear. And frankly, wasn't sure that I even wanted to apply for this because of the responsibilities of a trustee, and because of the juggling of finances and all that's really been your role. And I've watched now for 13 years to, this challenge that this board continues to deal with. How do you take care of a staff that really is precious and special? And when I talk about that staff, I'm talking about both the classified and the certified. And how do you support them and meet their needs and not lose them, but also how do you provide that education for the, for the students? And I think as a Board of Trustees, you have that responsibility, give that overarching administration, while at the same time, you're working with administrative staff, and you've got to listen to them. And, and so I think it's, it's a challenging job, because in, in some ways, while, while obviously, Mrs. Murphy, the, the buck stops with you, in some other ways, the buck stops with this board. You're the one who has to make those final decisions that, that may support or may not support Mrs. Murphy. And you have a second question?
Actually, it was just, how would you fulfill that role?
The way I do everything, and that's by trying to listen, and trying to discern the wisest steps to be taken. I'm obviously going to probably start with thinking about students and what's best for them. That's just going to stand out to me. But, but right, right along with that is, if we don't have, if we're not supporting our staff, how are you going to be able to help the students? And so it's balancing all of that, and frankly, I think that's a tough job that you all have been having.
Do you want anyone here?
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. I remember being upset. Okay. So mine is describe a good board meeting and what are the objectives of a good board meeting?
I think a good board meeting is where you have good interchange. I don't think it's where everyone necessarily is at, oh, I'll agree. While that may be the point you come to, but I think a good board meeting is where you were able to look at different sides of the subject of an issue and really have good discourse on that issue, not a fight over that issue hopefully, but good discourse over an issue, and then come together on a united view of things. And, and what are the objectives of a good board meeting? Cover the, cover the issues, look at the facts, listen, and then together make decisions that are going to support the whole community. And I think, again, if you've heard it in a couple of my other answers, there's a constituency that you have as a, as a Board of Trustees and even as a school district, and that constituency is broad. It's not just a board. While, while I have high regard for, I think I know almost all of you in some way in personal settings and all, and, and there's constituency that includes our staff, it's our students, it's the people that come onto the campus that, that are just vendors, it's our deputy in the firing department, and on all across our community, it's our seniors sort of like, I don't know that I want any more money going to education. I mean, there's, there's a whole part of the constituency, and, and I think that we're trying to, as a, as a board, the objective should be to be able to consider those constituencies, but then unite even in to make tough decisions, and you might not always be liked for them.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to Leslie Branson. Question number five.
Good evening. What would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
Thank you, Leslie. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Sorry you can't see us.
Are you smiling?
Well, if, if I really believed that I had not received accurate information, I, there's a lot of information that you get ahead of the board meeting. A lot of, in fact, that's why the concern is all, all the information you get, all the reading that you have to do, okay, Lord, if I'm supposed to do this, I'd have to figure that out. But I'm a face-to-face person, even with a mask, okay? And, and if I have a question about something, then I'm probably going to go to that person and, and ask, and say, I'm not sure if it was you, Mrs. Murphy, I'm not sure if this information is correct, and I would try to see what I could do to prepare myself before that board meeting. And, and if it wasn't, it wasn't matter, there's just, there's no information there maybe to provide, then you have to listen. I'd listen to the others, but at some point, you have to say, this is what I believe is the right way to go, regardless of what others might think. This, I'd be saying, and I, I tend to not be quiet. I tend to speak up, even if I'm the only one speaking up on something. So if you don't want someone to speak up, don't, don't invite me.
Thank you.
Question, Leslie?
Yes, thank you. That was it.
Okay. Question six. Describe your response to preparing for a Zoom in the grocery store and ask for your support on a particularly hot issue.
Oh, I'm sure that that has never happened. So it's really an odd question, isn't it? You know, um, there are times that you just have to listen and just say thank you. Since I've been around the community a little bit, I'm a little bit known, I can't hide out already. And so you just have to, and I think it would be important to listen, because there's something there that I may need to hear, even though I may totally disagree, or even though I may know, know that what this person is saying is totally wrong, I still need to listen and show that person respect. I'm not going to say I support, I'm not going to say you're right.
Now it's me again. How, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform, inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Well, one of the things that I've watched you doing, and one of, some of you might remember, we did a forum at the church, and it was a candidate's forum, and the purpose of that was to help those who are running for the school board to communicate with other people in the community. We've also had events, and again, that some of you have done and hosted with us at Higher Grounds Coffee House, and I think continuing those kinds of, where you get out there, where you get with the people, and, and be intentional, I think that's a part of it. There has to be some intentionality behind trying to communicate and listen to the community, and making sure that you're giving them opportunities to share with you. And especially if it's more contentious issue, more challenging issue, that really requires a lot of listening. And I think we have to be careful that we don't overprogram how we're going to listen to people. Sometimes we have the questions already set up, and they're almost meant to shake what a person, how they're going to respond to us, and we've limited them from being able to communicate what they really need to share with us. And so, while I think you can do some questions, but I think, and that's why I would say there's intentionality, but I think you've also got to allow for just the open interchange and be out there.
Please summarize the strengths you bring as a member of the board.
You don't want to know the weaknesses, huh?
Accessory.
Good. Good. I'm glad. Well, for one thing, I have a fairly positive view of life, a fairly positive view on this community. I am a lifelong learner. I now have, I've got a doctor of ministry, I've got two, two master's degrees, a BA, and I continue to learn. And I believe that's one of the things we want to do, is equip our students to be lifelong learners. I think that's a strength I bring. I think it brings a strength in that I'm able to think quickly, sometimes too quickly, there's the weakness side of it, okay? But I'm able to think quickly and, and, and look at other things that are behind the issue and listen to those kinds of things, that's a real part of, something that's important to me. I'm a pastor, and, and as a pastor, I'm hearing people all the time, and I am a communicator, obviously. I, I better be, otherwise I'm probably going to fail in what I'm doing. But, so, I, I think that's a strength that I bring to the board. My, my broad educational experience, not just in my degrees, but I've been involved in everything from winning a state championship as a, as a head soccer coach at our small Christian school. We actually developed a small school in our church, and it was a multi-age classroom, so I understood different dynamics and creative ways of doing education. I've been involved in band, as a band booster, and a football booster at, at our public high school where our son graduated from and then went on to USC. And so I have a broad range of educational experiences, and, and I've served on a committee that, that actually was a bond committee, and, and we actually raised the funds and did the vote, and we actually got a, a positive vote in, in Goodyear for two or three different bond elections, and I was actually treasurer of that. So I've done finance, but that's not the thing I like, but, but I, but I have the ability to think it through and understand it. So those are just my broad, general view of life.
You know what? What will you do to become a more effective board member?
So I've obviously talked to a couple of you, trying to understand your, your role a little bit more, and you scare me because of how many hours you put in. And as a part of that research, I think that's what I do, is I try to, I try to study and learn and listen and, and uncover information, and I'm doing that, I'm a fairly relational person, I get along with people, and because of that, people tend to open up to me, because that's the counselor part of me. And, and so, I believe it was one of the board members, one of the trustees that I was talking to, was talking even about the kind of ongoing learning experiences, classes, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, of what I view them as, even a degree, and, and I would apply myself to that. Obviously, I haven't stopped. I just did the doctor of ministry just five years, this is about seven, I'm going to use credit at time. But I'm going to do whatever I need to do to try to equip myself to do well in the
Okay. Dr. Branson, can we get in?
Yes, sir. I have part of the question missing, but will you fill in the words? Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, blah, 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 and determine how to vote on the issue.
And your personal value and beliefs.
Say that again?
It was, and your personal value and beliefs.
Thank you.
To determine how to vote on the issue. That was a long question, a very long question, but just one question.
Yes.
Do you need it repeated?
No, no, I just answered yes. That suffice, Leslie?
No, sir, that doesn't. Identify a recent board decision. We've had some recently that you could feel strongly about. Describe how you would balance the community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, your personal value and beliefs, to determine how to vote on an issue.
So I'm tempted to go back farther, but one of the recent decisions was the decision to, to have the bond election. And I frankly encouraged several of you to go for it, because I believe in the value of, of us trying to communicate with the community and, and if need be, raise the funds to meet the needs of improving our education. And I know that there's different sides to that, I ran into that with close friends who were very opposed to the idea. And again, I think as, as I, as I watched that decision, I would still say it was the right decision. I would still probably say you need to do that, based on trying to improve things in our district, and you followed all the parameters, you did all the, the right things legally and all. Maybe. Maybe we needed to do some further listening out there, research out there, to find out those concerns that people would have that would oppose it. And why they would oppose it. And then that might shape how you put together that bond. But see, that'd be a part of the steps that I'd be taking as we'd be looking at, but I still believe that we were supposed to do that. And I'm sorry that you went through that and it didn't happen. But hopefully you'll be able to ground work and learn some things for the next step. Because just because you got a no doesn't mean there can't be a yes. And as you're hearing now, some of the steps I'd be going through as I'd be making that decision.
Thank you.
There's two more questions here, question number 11. What questions do you have to the board to help you prepare to take on this commitment if chosen?
I'm not sure that I have any specific ones to ask you, because I've asked many. I've looked at the time commitment, and that is a concern. And some of you are spending many hours in going to many meetings. And while some of them I already do, so maybe that's not adding on more. But just how you're able to juggle that with the kind of responsibilities each one of you already have with staff, right? And how to juggle that, how to fairly juggle that responsibility with the other tasks that are on the plate? And how you personally are able to accomplish that.
I think the same, that we all try to be hard tonight. I mean, this is me all. For us, you're definitely, Leslie as well, that we tend to overcommit. And we, because we want to help, and we want to listen, and we want to move our district forward, and we want, and so we end up, I think all of us have a lot of commitments in the community, within our school district. I think it's a juggling act for all of us, and sometimes, you know, I think each one of us have to take a little bit of time for ourselves and regroup and say, and you know, try to say, okay, this weekend is just for me, it's fall weekend, or whatever.
Exactly, we have four other board members that can help during this time.
And I think that we're all very comfortable with asking, hey, can you jump in and attend this meeting for me? Because I really, I can't do that. I mean, that way you jumped in last night, two time trustees were Jordan and I, because Leslie wasn't feeling good. So I think that we all are learning how to ask for help when we need it.
How many questions could I ask?
That's it.
Thank you.
It's funny. So yeah, you can ask, ask my question.
Oh, really?
Well, I mean, our meeting is till 10 o'clock. So anyhow, after that, we have to go to the longer, so. And now he's going to tell you no.
That's not your family. It's another thing we have to do in order to juggle our commitments.
And how many, most of your meetings go four to six hours? No comment.
It really depends on the time of the year. There are times of the year where there's a longer agenda, because it's, we have LCAP, we have budget, we have this, and so it tends to be longer. And others were like, wow, we're out of here at 7:31. So it really depends on the agenda. If you get a mini reports and a long action calendar, you're like, buckle up for the ride. Bring your dinner and let's go.
To give you a perspective, this meeting agenda is 37 pages long. And so we'll see how long this one goes, and then whether four meeting agendas are 200 plus pages long.
What I'd also say is that our, the three of us knew on the board almost two years ago. There's Marnie Kurt. And so I know that our board meetings took a lot longer at that point because we were not up to speed. So there's, more recently, I think we've been much more efficient. And we're not fishing that 10 o'clock vote. We haven't done that come out.
We haven't done that in a long time.
But it's important to note that, you know, we as a new board, we took the time. We said, okay, this meeting will take longer because you have an obligation to learn, study up, and keep asking questions.
Yes.
So we'll take that time again with our new board.
Yes.
Jordan, what's been your biggest surprise coming onto the board?
Oh, wow. Yes, I think it's a great question. There's been, usually it's surprise after surprise. Especially with this pandemic beginning, I feel like every day we would wake up to new news. New information, whether it's from the federal level or the state level or the county level. Or maybe something going on locally that Michelle and Shannon will do an excellent job of keeping you aware of. But there have been a lot of surprises. I'll throw out there, just, you know, it was rather innocuous to the district, but it was a surprise in and of itself, and that was a protest that was held in front of the district in Blue Jay area.
Oh, yes.
There was, there were protesters and there were camera protesters. They just, they rather came up quick, and it was quite a surprise that the district got drawn into a third-party event. So that's a fun one for you.
It was peaceful, so it all made sense.
Jordan, how have you juggled having been a staff person, teacher, and coming onto the board? And those relationships and that former role with this role?
Honestly, it's listening and also communicating. I think one of the problems that we had before in the past was both sides not necessarily understanding each other. And I believe at this point, there is a lot more respect, not because of necessarily what I've done or what this board has done, but I think that there were, there was a lot of things changing a couple of years ago, and with all the new players. There wasn't, there was, there wasn't much listening going on, and there was also a lot of fear. So I've been doing listening, but also communicating and trying to be able to explain to either side how the other side sees things. And oftentimes, I think there's been a lot of, oh, wow, I didn't realize. So there tends to be a little bit of myopia, and that has, I kind of try to take responsibility to explain that there's actual thought or history behind how some folks are feeling, yeah.
I could go on, but I won't.
Are you willing to resign from any conflicting currently held board positions? And that means a publicly elected position? Like if you were on the waterboard, elected?
Okay.
That could not, oh, I'm the pastor of a church, is that a conflict? No.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't be resigning as the pastor. I'm not on any publicly elected boards. So would I be willing? Yes?
There you go. Simple, simple question.
Yes.
Yay.
The top.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there one for me too? I got, talk to us. You are twice as nice. Oh, you got it up here.
Well, there's a, there's a, actually, we got to fill in with our own.
Oh, there you go, okay. That's a trick.
Do you have questions for us? Questions are taken, but we take them on the podiums.
Oh, well, look at you. We didn't even think about it, we're just like trying so hard to make it accessible. Yes.
I was thinking, I wish we could remember all of those all.
No.
Especially having, we were all in the hot seat before, where it's like, okay, what's the question? Two, two minutes. All of the things kind of, you're kind of stuck.
Good evening. Well, welcome. Before we begin, I'll give you a little insight, we'll go ahead and round robin our questions as board members. And I'll introduce you to everyone that's here tonight. We have county senators, our superintendent, Kenny Harrowell, chief business official. Hall of Fame associate superintendent, Michelle Markey, superintendent. We board members have introduced ourselves already, good evening. We also have Heather Kneads, our director of educational services. Mark Malone, our coordinator of technology services. And Derek John, director of special education services. So, good evening. Let's go ahead and begin. We'll go ahead and ask our first question, there are twelve of them, so we'll go through them as we need to, and the questions are on the podium. Yes, thank you Cindy, there's also no time limit for these questions, so take the time that you need to answer them. Question one, what do you see as the basic purpose of the public schools? What is the role of the board trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Public schools are kind of the I'm gathering my thoughts.
That's okay.
The public school is society's, I think, one of its largest enterprises. In helping to guide and mold our children to become citizens and part of the community. And I think the board itself is supposed to give leadership and guidance to the public, the whole public system. I kind of think also that the maybe I don't want to get into that. So let's see. I'm just, at this point, I'm drawing a blank, so I could probably go back to that.
Oh, sweetie. Okay, I'm super excited that a piece of paper is there, because there's three questions in this one question. So what are, what are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? Which is your highest priority and why? So you can take one at a time, because I got a few more.
Well, I've been in the mountains for 49 years. So I've raised my children here, and I saw the school district as a really stabilizing force and influence along in the mountains here. I think that that I have always appreciated the principals, the teachers, the organizations, the what they offer for children to, the learning environment, the the sports, I think the sports were very important, especially for my children as they got into the high school area. How would you like to accomplish as a board member? As a board member, I would like to give direction in policy and in curriculum. I think that the classroom is the most important element to the whole school system. I think that everything else supports the classroom. And what happens in the classroom is the teacher, the curriculum, and the student. And I think those three things coming together in the classroom is the most, is the biggest focus. And then everything else supports that. Your custodians, your classified, your bus drivers, your sports programs, your after-school programs. All of that helps and supports what's happening in the classroom. And so I'd like to see us as a group, it has to, I know you're probably in line with all of that. I think I can give it some different input in some of this area. I did homeschool for a length of time. And I can help to help you understand where homeschoolers are coming from. What their ideas are about the school system, what they think might need to be done, improved, and helped to draw back in some of our students. We had attended, my children had attended in, as early elementary. Then I took them out for their middle school years and some late elementary and middle school years. And then they went back in as high school. And so I have that perspective, and that may be helpful to you all. My highest priority is is learning, is teaching, learning, curriculum. I just, those are my main things, that's I think that that's what we want to see happening in the lives of children. Any child, every child. We want to see every single one to be successful and and have a love for beauty, for for truth. And these are the kinds of things that I think are that answers that.
Perfect, thank you. As a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or primary role? How would you fulfill that role, both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
Well, I think, first of all, I would like to be a proactive element with the board. I would want to be an asset to the board with my own input and I would want to give leadership and guidance in whatever areas we're wanting to impress upon the system, the public, any of that. I would fulfill that role, I think, mainly because of what I do offer as a, I'm a credentialed teacher of a multiple subject. I also, like I said, I homeschool my children. My main my main priority at life was to be a stay-at-home mom. I loved that. And I, I think that we can help public feel that not everybody has to be in a position of leadership to be contributing to the community and to the education of their children. Let's see. And I hope to just be a helpful and an asset and supportive with all members here and
Describe a good board meeting and what are the objectives of a good board meeting?
Well, I would imagine sticking to the agenda. Getting through the agenda is a good idea. I think it's one where there's openness and sharing. Where questions can be posed and answered, you know. where questions can be posed and answered, you know. Where things are accomplished, decisions are made, that actually things get done. I think that's a big part of it. And I think what we always remember, have to deal with is that we have limited resources and unlimited needs. So, we're just, we're working together to do the best we can with what we have to meet the needs that we deem are important.
Thank you. Dr. Ramsen, question five.
Good evening. What would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
Well, I first would check the information on my own. I would redo my own research. And then I would go to whatever administrator I felt had not, you know, given me the right information. And then I would ask that person, you know, what's going on. Sometimes it's just a miscommunication. Sometimes it's just a a lack of focus, you know, just something was misunderstood. I assume, I would assume, I really would doubt somebody would deliberately give somebody else that information. I just tend to take more optimistic view, I think, of human nature. So, I would definitely, the benefit of the doubt goes far. And I would look for my own information and answers as needed. I hope that answers, Leslie.
Thank you. Yes, it did.
Okay. Describe response if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot issue. You may substitute grocery store with grocery store. Go stop there. All places that people will find this company.
Well, you know, first of all, I would I would, you know, stop, listen, and I would try to repeat back to that person what I thought I heard to be sure that I knew and understood what they were trying to say. Then I would say, I would I might even take a few notes because I want to hear what people have to say on particular issues. And then I would assure that parent that I would, you know, bring it to the Board. I would you know, bring it, look it further into the issue if it needed further research. If, you know, I would try to help that parent or a person in the community who could be a person. I would like them to know that I, you know, care about your opinion and that I would I certainly wouldn't give them an answer at that moment. No answer, no. But try to draw them out and hear what they have to say and then bring it back to the Board with further discussion.
Okay. Back to me. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform Board deliberations on important policy issues?
Okay.
That's a long one. Just every time.
Well, I think we have to be sure to keep parents informed as much as possible. I would imagine through the website, through the papers, the local papers, and through communications directly from the school. So, I think we, by law, have to, you know, inform parents of certain things that are coming and give them a chance to pose questions and things. I don't know if you do it ahead of the meeting or not, or if you allow them to come into the meeting and post questions. I think the law is basically saying you have to either email or write a letter or something ahead of time for discussion. But I think parents need to know. And I like it that we have, you know, good reporters in our local newspapers that give us good information and help us with understanding what the issues are. But also, I think parents need to be reminded now and then that they do have that opportunity. So, we want to be sure it's out there that parents have the opportunity to come in and express their views.
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the Board.
Okay. Well, I'm a mountain, mountain person. Been up here for a million years. And raised my children here. I think also having homeschooled. And then when I was, after I got my credential, I taught in the charter schools. So, I taught with Options for Youth and California Virtual Academies. So, I also taught in a private school. So, I was in a self-contained classroom for a time as well. So, I have all of that experience. And then I have the homeschooling side of it. How to handle that whole situation? There's so many ins and outs of the homeschooling experience. And if someone on the Board had that experience, it can be helpful. Having been a credentialed teacher, am a credentialed teacher, and taught, I have full sympathy with teachers. I really, really appreciate teachers. I appreciate what they do in the classroom. The load that they carry is enormous. And I think we need to get those views out there. I'm also, at this point, I am doing Zoom classes with my, a few of my grandchildren. And so, I'm back in because that is a lot of what I did with California Virtual Academy is I worked at Luminate and Blackboard. So, I'm very well aware of the online classroom, how it works, what works, what doesn't. And so I think I can bring that to the Board. I'm up on the legislative side of California. I work with Republican women as their legislative chairman. And I have been writing reports each month over the last two years about what's going on in Sacramento. And I have some rapport with some of the R-77 and all as well. So, so I think that, along with, I retired, actually, in 2016. And I decided to become a watercolor painter. And so, I am a watercolor artist. I have artwork displayed in town at various times. I'm right now displayed down in, with Redlands Art Association. And I think that, I think that helps me because it gives me a focus. And it helps me to, I think it would be a fun thing to share here in our group because I think beauty is a part of education. And I think what we're trying to achieve in watercolor painting is a sentimental. So, I could bring that as well. I love our seniors. And I have worked with the seniors part of the faculty. So, I like all age ranges. And so, and I have experience with a lot of various ranges. So, I can bring that. So, I think that should cover it.
What will you do to become more effective as a Board member?
As a Board member, well, I'd have to catch up. I'm definitely willing to learn. I have a teachable spirit and attitude. And I am a willing person to, you know, any past agendas I've gone in. I've looked at some of the past agendas, of course. And I do realize that there's a lot of water under the bridge here. So, I would, if there were classes or anything that I needed to take, any publications or books that would be helpful, that any of you are using, that you feel are helpful, that would be, that would be great. And I'd like to get to know you better. I think it's to get to know people you're working with. I think it's a good way to build rapport.
Dr. Ramsen, question ten.
Good evening, Teresa. Identify a recent Board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal value and beliefs to determine how to vote on an issue.
Okay. I don't know how the Board actually dealt with AB 329. This is the sex education bill that came through. I feel very strongly that as we see more and more of that kind of thing coming from Sacramento, you're going to see more and more people leaving the public schools. How can we ameliorate that? How can we help? Because we can't stop what's coming from Sacramento, but we can help to make it palatable or mitigated in some way to our, in our public classrooms. So, I don't know how the Board handled that, although we had a discussion at one point. And I think we felt that the teachers have taken a lot of the responsibility on that. Again, there are my teachers again. I love my teachers. And I think teachers handle things very well, generally, in the classroom. And we can trust what they do. And so, that's, that was one thing that did come up that I was very strongly.
Thank you, Teresa.
All right. Back to me here. What questions do you have for the Board to help them prepare to take all this commitment if chosen? And you can ask as many questions as you'd like.
Okay. Well, can I ask each person? All right. Let's just start over here. Let's say you'll be last.
Okay.
If you want to just tell me something about what's important to you on the Board. I'll put you on the top seat.
But no, it's the Board, so we can start with Jordan.
All right. Well, definitely, a lot of things have been touched on tonight that are of high importance. I think listening to our communities are very large. When we are in a very small, you know, community that's very diverse in terms of its population, in terms of the key operating. And so, since we are so diverse, yet close knit, listening to our community members is, I feel amplified as compared to other districts. So, that's one thing that's extremely important. The other part of it is being a lifelong learner, committing to what it takes to be a good Board member, knowing what, you know, never delving into the weeds or diving into things that are not our responsibilities. You have to remember, at the end of the day, the Board has one employee, and that's the Superintendent. It's not our responsibility to be going and talking to principals or giving directions to any member of the district. Even as a singular Board member, you don't have the authority to give Michelle direction. You may ask questions, and that's important, asking questions. And we ask a lot of them, especially since three out of the five of us are relatively new to this Board. But I think those are some huge aspects and important parts of governance. The other large component that is important to us is building, not recording, you had mentioned, and working with one another. Because governance, a district will only lead itself as good as its governance team is. And the governance team is the five Board members and the Superintendent. So, in order to make progress forward, we must all be able to find a way to work with one another. And that's all been placed in the context of the great good of what's best for our students. We have a lot of stakeholder groups that we need to represent. But at the end of the day, we're all here for our students. We want to take care of our teachers. We want to take care of our classified staff. We want to take care of our concerned parents and community members. But at the end of the day, we're all here to serve. The singular stakeholder group that can't be represented or choose who represents, perhaps, our students.
Wow, he said, oh. No, she's brilliant. So, what's important to me? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, okay. Serving the students. Really, it's about serving the students. And for me, I like to stay involved in community and functions. I like being involved even at the school level. I'm still a PTA even though my kids have graduated out because it's to stay close to students, to parents, to teachers, to administration, and really understand what's going on at the site level without going past that boundary of, here, let me just tell you what to do, you know, that kind of stuff. So, I really, I mean, all of that that Jordan said, I don't want to reiterate, but that's important to me too. But I think staying involved and really about serving students. And everything, everything I do is student-focused. Thank you. Look at me, it's hard for you.
I'm going to have nothing left to say. And I'm going to repeat actions, making sure that we, as a district and as a community, are providing the best chance possible for all of our students. And making sure that it's, each student has the optimum opportunity to be able to go out and face life and geared toward each of those students' skills and abilities. So, in order to do so, reaching out to the community, making sure whatever supports we can provide are provided, and being that conduit with listening and communicating. And I'm kind of the perfectionist in trying to be able to make sure that really no stone unturned in bringing those opportunities.
We're a very cohesive Board at the moment. We don't always agree. But respect, I think, is the bottom line for all of us. Respect for each other and for the rest of our team who help gather the information that we need to make the best decisions possible for this to make the best decisions possible for the students. It's priority number one for me to recognize that my own opinions or biases are not important as it is for what the best interest of the student is, the whole student is, not my own individual desires. So I do, all of us are very involved in things within the community, within the school, in order to get the largest perspective possible outside of our own small circle. And it's important for me that our whole team works towards gathering those things, brings it back to each other, shares it, so we can make those educated and informed decisions that aren't personal decisions.
Dr. Ransson, one of the questions that has interacted with us, I'm doing one repeating it, all the time.
Yeah, Leslie, I was just asking, what is important to you about the, being on the board and what the board does?
What's important to me is that I personally continue to be a lifelong learner and use myself as an example to others. And I need to be open and listen to all sides of every discussion, but I must make my decisions based on my value system, taking into account what other people feel and think, but base it on, I guess you would say, my conscience. Students have a vast array of talents and we cannot meet all of those needs of our students, but we can also be in a place that we can mentor, we can role model, and we can put our students in touch with other people who will be able to guide them according to their strengths. On our board, we have a diverse group of very talented individuals and each individual on our board and the administrators and our superintendent, we're all very different and we have different learning styles. And if we can put our students in touch with those individuals as mentors would be beneficial. And to encompass all of our students in the educational experience that's safe and nurturing is what our goal is, my goal is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it's me! I was, I, all of it, all of that was just filling into my brain, so sorry. Are you willing to resign from any conflicting currently held board decisions in that? Not from your other positions?
I just attend meetings.
Okay. So yes, the answer is yes?
Yes. Am I willing to? Yes.
There you go! That's a great answer! All right. Thank you so much!
Thank you, Teresa.
So we just completed our interview with both of our candidates and again, we do have the opportunity.
Jordan, could you speak up, please? I'm not able to hear you.
You can use the microphone here outside. So since we've just completed our interview with the candidates, we do have the opportunity as a board to discuss. Again, this is not for vote, the time that we vote, that is an action item in 4.1, but we do have the opportunity to discuss. If you'd like to wait until that action item, we may do so. But I'll open it up just for a moment, so to hear from any of our board members that would like to speak about our board.
Personally, because I've been, Leslie and I have been through this twice, it's easier to just wait to the agenda item to have a discussion about the candidates instead of doing it now and then doing it again. It's just, to me, more effective and efficient to just do discussion of candidates in the, when we get to that agenda item. If somebody wants to do it differently, that's all good. I just know that it just tended to be easier unless we're.
My recommendation is to move it to there.
I'll throw in something for discussion.
Go, go! You are worthy tonight. Let's go!
Well, it's rather innocuous. So we'd like to say to both of our candidates, you know, to thank you for, one, taking the time to fill out our first initial application to fill the, to fill the vacancy in Area One, and then to come here prepared with answers and, right, you've both really done some research and to take the time to answer a second set of questions. I know it was overlapped with the first application, but I think we all very much appreciate that you're doing this and it's, it's all been time you've invested on your own and that's very difficult, you know, to ask of community members. So we really, I think we as a whole, as an entire board appreciate you taking that time and interest to be an active member and hopefully whoever is not chosen, continue, decides to continue making a vested interest in our public education system. You both mentioned listening to, to our candidates, listening to our constituents, I should say, and being active. I hope that continues. So we appreciate that. With that, we'll move on to 4.0, public testimony. 4.1, public comment period where items listed on this agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Due to the modified meeting procedures during the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, if a member of the public would like to address the governing board on agenda items within the subject matter of their jurisdiction, an email should have been submitted to the executive secretary to the superintendent by noon today. Written comments will be read aloud and subject to the board's usual time limits for public comments. 4.2, public comments. And we will, we did receive one, so I'll go ahead and read that. It is a comment from Gail Russell. And I'll read what she has submitted verbatim. "Good evening. As a crestline resident and living in Area One, I am excited about the two applicants you have interviewed tonight for the upcoming spoken position for the school board. I have known both of the applicants for many years. I have been friends with Teresa Ratzek for over forty years and I have known Bill Mellinger since he moved to the mountains about twelve years ago, both as a pastor and a friend, and as a friend. Thank you. Tonight, we have two exceptional candidates to fill the crestline seat. Both have a heart for our school district and its staff and students, as well as our community. Each would be an asset to the board as they each bring different strengths and unique qualities. I believe your decision will not be an easy one. I will be happy to have either one representing you. Thank you for all your dedication to our school district and our community. Gail Russell." That was the only public comment that was submitted, but thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Gail!
With that, we'll move on to 4.3, RK and CSEA representatives. Do we have RK speaker this evening?
We do have.
No speaker at this time. And for CSEA?
We do have.
No speaker at this time. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to 5.0, action calendar. 5.1, Board of Trustees, Board Member Provisional Appointment, Page One, Fiscal Impact to Be Determined. Yes, so we all, if anyone would like to call for a nomination, we can sit, we can all take a moment and think and deliberate, you can read your notes, and when somebody is ready to make a call for a nomination, we can move that forward and open up for discussion.
If there's a second.
If there's a second.
But we don't have open discussion before we do the call for the nomination. Because you have the nomination table.
Understood.
So if you want to take a moment, you can read your notes. As a reminder, you also have both applications in your board packet as well.
I'll call for a nomination of William Mallinger to the board.
Please pass the microphone to the board. The nomination for William Mallinger. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
And we'll go ahead and open it for discussion. Discussion.
I, I mean, to reiterate what everyone said, you know, you're both very great, strong candidates and I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this. Obviously, it was hard to find somebody willing to do the position from the get-go and no candidate, you know, stepped forward to run for the position, which was a bit disappointing, that the whole community couldn't make, be part of the selection process. I'm disappointed by that, that it has to be a board decision. And I know the board's been put in a position where they've had to do that numerous times in the past. And I would tell you, it's not a fun position to be in. I would rather the community be taking part in this, but I do appreciate both of your time and effort moving forward with this, so thank you.
I would also like to, you know, to add on to Natalie mentioned, it is, you know, it's disheartening when you have a public office that is not, you know, when nobody runs for a seat in public office and it has to go through a board appointment. I get that we're all elected officials, but at the same time, it feels that it is, you know, taking away from the voters of the area. So it is a difficult thing, but as a reminder, it is an election to a short term, so that this will be carrying over until the next public election, it could be 2022. So there is that opportunity for residents and voters of Area One to have that opportunity again. It's not serving a full term to carry it over until the next public election.
And a great point highlighted that none of us live in that area, but we all say that, you know, have highlighted that we represent the entire community and nobody feels like we are fighting each other for one community or over the other. We represent the entire district and try to make decisions according to that.
And discussing the way you do the nomination of Bill Mallinger.
I'm very grateful that both individuals stepped up to become vulnerable, because being in this position is vulnerable. Qualified candidates, very qualified candidates, and I am very thankful for the civic-mindedness of these individuals.
Having a crestline. I did have some folks talk to me as far as wondering what was happening and putting in their two cents. And frankly, everybody knows either of you, both of you basically thinks the world of you. And so I had nobody give any kind of, oh dear, or any, you know, so I listened, I asked and I listened and the feedback I got was wonderful. So accordingly, I'm very grateful. Frankly, I wish only one of you had put in your name rather than both of you, because that makes the situ, I think, you would do a wonderful job and you both were excellent interviews. And I have no doubt that the level of care that you would put into the position would be phenomenal. So I, I spoke with Gail at the post office and she's a Brazilian person, told me that it couldn't go wrong. And I, I admire her and I take what she has to say very, very seriously. So I, I don't feel like we can make a mistake here. With that said, as far as the folks who did speak up, more folks are familiar with that and so is more connected with our community. So there was no negative whatsoever, it was just more a matter of potential outrage. There's, there's, there's more there, but frankly, I am so grateful to both of you.
I know we've been speaking in generalities about the position, but since the nomination was short, Bill, I would just like to say as well, you, Bill, that I do feel like you can serve our, our board well. I do feel like you represent the constituents of Area One well. And I just want to make sure that, you know, since this is a call for his nomination, that we say some, some things about Bill or how we feel about it. And I do feel like how you think you represent the community well.
I would add, you know, Bill, I have more exposure to you and that's because you have been a host of some of our events in the past and you're aware that we do do the time with trustees and that we're doing things in the community and reaching out and I've seen you do those. And that was of great importance to our entire board is that we were being accessible to our community and that in turn, except, you know, able to share their concerns, share their opinions and perspectives on what's going on in the district. And I know that, like you said, you're already there. And the, the concern about the time commitment, you're going to be doubling up on a lot of things potentially and we all do, there are five of us and so I'm not sure if you are aware, but we have a calendar where we take all the community events and we split them up amongst the board members. So we're not having multiple or too many board members at one event and we're covering the entire mountain and community and those things. So I, again, I know that you have been very involved in that and you're, you're aware of the expectations that we place on ourselves as a board and I think fit very well into that kind of standard that we set for ourselves.
And one other thing I would add is, I know I was one of the board members that you questioned ahead of time in terms of wanting to know what the commitment was going to be. And you asked. So I appreciate that you did take, you know, you took, you took the effort to reach out to ask and make sure that you understood what it was that you were signing up for.
you know, you took, you took the effort to reach out, to ask and make sure that you understood what it was that you were signing up for.
Okay, so yes, any, any last thoughts? We'll go ahead and call for the vote that Dr. Branson, I'll give you a, if you're not here in the room.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You had any comments before we called for the vote?
No, I don't.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and call for the vote on this, again, the nomination for William Mellinger to, again, to say provisional appointment to board Area One. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I would like to congratulate you, William, for your provisional appointment. And I would, we would very much like to thank you for the time and going through this community process. So. So with that, with Bill at that, can move on to 5.2, our educational services. We do have more on the topic. A proposal of the process to consider the recommendations for amendments to the Learning Continuity Plan, LCP, submitted by the San Francisco County Superintendent of Schools, SBCSS, pages 2 through 35 to segment 9.
So then.
Here Cindy's our first.
I second.
Hannah's our second. A discussion.
Thank you, Heather.
Yes, thank you very much.
And your team.
I read through all of the recommendations and they seem mostly just looking, recommending to, to expand on what we've already covered. So I didn't see any concerning recommendations, gaps or, or issues in any sort of, so I guess definitely a huge thank you to Heather and to the members of the previously LPAP committee that's transitioned its focus to LCP lately. Any other discussions? Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. 6.0, future meeting days. Regular board meeting, November 19, 2020, at 5:30 PM. It'll be in the Ridge High School library and streamed via YouTube. We have a regular board meeting for December 15, 2020, at 5:30 PM. It'll be here in the Ridge High School library and streamed via YouTube. That one we won't want to miss because that's when our new board will be installed and that's when the start of the next term will be. So don't, don't miss out on.
Yeah, it's selling.
Yes. All future meetings will be held at the Ridge High School library and via YouTube to the public until executive orders change regarding gatherings. 7.0, adjournments. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at 7:34 PM.
Now, our second discussion. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Yeah, please, if you wouldn't mind saying, Bill, afterwards, we'll look to attract you to take some pictures. I'll call for the vote now. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The board, the meeting was adjourned at 7:34 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.